Alright, here we are. Welcome to Tunnel Meeting number 138. It's March 18th, 2025. And today, we're being joined by Alfred, Ashley, Guillermo, Karim, Malik, Enon Zork and Vanessa. Thanks all for being here at the start of the call. I assume a bit more people will join in during, as per usual. And as you can see on the screen, a little outline of the agenda. We start off with a couple of mentions and then a quick, short, concise update on the Q2 budgets. I really tried to keep that short and not go too much in depth. Then, after that, we have an event report on Alef Pop-Up City by LATAM. And after that, if there's open, if there's room, there very well might be. Yeah, we can have open topics. Any questions, any things you feel we should be discussing with the wider group? Go there, preferably not budget-related topics. But we'll, we'll see how that goes. So yeah, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are all quite in tune with the mission and vision of SingularityNet and the wider ecosystem and that want to help contribute to it. And we do have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups, which you, for sure, if you're interested in helping out, we do have a workgroup that suits your interests. If you're looking to help out, do hop onto our Discord server. It has a "How to Join" section and this will explain you how to join. Quickly admitting some people. Alright, then two sessions to call out coming up. First one is tomorrow at 13 UTC. And it's on the, from the AI Ethics Workgroup. And it's a session on interview experience, so it's for those that have been doing interviews. Yeah, it's basically, maybe Vanessa can I put you on the spot or is that rude?
Yeah, you can, sure. I mean, it's actually open to anyone who's interested. What we're going to be doing is looking back over what we've learnt from doing interviews and what we might add to our ideas of best practice. So if you're interested in qualitative research in any way, even if you haven't done any interviews for the workgroup, you still might find it interesting. So it's just going to be quite a chilled-out chat and kind of retrospective and plenary, I suppose. So yeah, hope to see people there.
Awesome, looking forward to it. And then an additional card. Let me quickly check. Yeah, that's correct. At coming Monday at 15 UTC, there's a discussion session on AI autonomy. Should we fear it, embrace it, maybe ignore it? And this will be led by Kolin. And yeah, looking forward to that as well. She wasn't able to pitch it right here due to an overlapping call. But do join on Monday at 15 UTC. Then, yeah, an update on Q2 budgets and the consent process around it. Last evening, last night at midnight, UTC, there was the deadline for, for the initial consent or objections. And this led to a list of approved budget requests. And I'll quickly call them out. You can also read along, of course. It's AI Ethics, Archives, Gamers, GitHub, PBL, Governance, Knowledge Base, LATAM, Moderators, Onboarding, Process, Strategy, Treasury, Treasury Automation and Video. Yeah, basically, these, these workgroups or guilds all received consents only, or no objections at least. There were some abstains here and there. And earlier today during Governance, we had a relatively long session in which we managed to cover one workgroup and its objections. I didn't put a list of those that still need a bit of, well, further discussion on the objections. But I think it's about eight workgroups, maybe seven, that have outstanding objections, which yeah, need to be talked through and hopefully find some common ground and get consent eventually. So basically, this means there's more sessions needed. We do have the open governance sessions on Thursdays. And the governance workgroup calls on Tuesdays. So in theory, I'm thinking it should be doable to do it coming Thursday and then next week Tuesday. And it would be quite helpful if workgroups prepare a little on this by reading the objections. The sheet with all the consent results is in the governance channel. So yeah, basically, it's open to comments. So if you, as a workgroup, have some further context to provide on certain objections, please do so. It speeds things up quite a bit if this is done asynchronous rather than, yeah, all in session. And I'm quite confident we can get it done with two additional sessions. Also, a small note to myself there on, I guess, myself or the facilitator. Today, I failed at keeping track of time and this resulted just in one workgroup being covered in an hour and a half total session time. Yeah, if we do it like that, we'll be doing this for the coming four weeks. So yeah, a little nudge on checking out the, the results and using the comment functionality of that sheet. Quick check on the room. Any, any questions or comments, things I'm leaving out and should be including? Do you guys feel it's reasonable to take, basically, take these two days of Thursday and Tuesday? Or should it be maybe a completely new, separate session, like a currently unscheduled one? Could also be a way of doing it. Any thoughts on that? I did see a thumbs up by Vanessa and Guillermo. I assume that's done on the, yeah, just using these two governance sessions. But yeah, feel free to either ask or put some questions in chat if you have them. And if not, I think that's as much as budget topic-wise for today as it will be for the remainder of the tunnel. I think last quarter, we had this, this very smooth experience where we had one session of figuring out the objections and we were done. And I think the earlier session of today was a gentle reminder of how much everybody... Yeah, it's, it can get a little, how to put it nicely? Not sure if it even needs to be put nicely, to be honest. It's just not the most fun discussions. Yeah, so that's why I figured for the remainder of the tunnel, let's, let's skip the further budget topic. Alright, not seeing any questions in the room. Then moving on to the event report on the Alef Pop-Up City by the LATAM Guild. I will need to grab a link for screen sharing, so stopping this one for a second. Trying to find the link.
Just share on Telegram.
Yep.
Some of the links, if you can keep the order. Okay, if you can keep the order, I will try my best to summarize this. You give me the goal and I... But basically, guys, um... What to start? I think it is cool to start with the name of this. Alef, I don't know how many of you guys have read Jorge Luis Borges. It's one of the, let's say, he's bigger than Messi down here, bigger than Maradona, and he's a writer. Pretty cool, blind dude, born in the 40s. One of his famous short stories is the Alef. That is about this imaginary place within a house. So it's kind of where we are right now and who we are, kind of. I perceive it that way. We are virtual, but we are present, we are tone. This event started last year, Pop-Up City. Last year, we were on stage. This time, we have the opportunity to present a workshop deck, different dynamic, different scale from last year, as they have changed their calendar. Okay, last year was in October. This time, they, they push it in this summer, let's say, mobility. As in October, November here in Buenos Aires, there are going to be a bunch of events. So as you can see, Peter is showing a calendar, kind of looks like ours, with all these events happening in different dates with different topics. Pretty cool. It's going through a whole month, well, three, three weeks and a half. Next week is Hackathon. Last week, we have, give me a second, I want to ask my kid to turn the body down because I'm sure you can hear.
It'll get filtered out for us luckily, but it seems not for you.
Yeah, 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 sorry for that, guys. So where was I? So you can see, guys, guys, check on this. Peter, if you can, you can throw the links also in the chat so people can check it out. We share, this is the announcement we publicized last week, one of our, one of our main X account. But you guys should check the landing page of this. So a lot of cool things happening, all related to mainly Web3 community development. So a little bit of context. So it is a co-work space, huge building, okay? So you have all the minds, nerds around, okay? All the developers, business startup people. So the idea of the event is to take the discussion to where they are. Good dynamic, you know? People from all around the world come in, all, all different chains of the questions. Paul Kalod, they are big ETH kind of community. So we are kind of in the midst because, you know, we are multi-chain. But they were, of course, they approached us a month ago with a partnership pitch, okay? They asked, we are, we say, it would be cool for us to present SingularityNet, the ASI Alliance, F4. I really want to meet the organizers for several reasons. Though we approached this, we sent the information, the pitch deck and all this to the SIO team members of SingularityNet. It was a short, it was a short time, timeframe, you say. Time, yeah, we were time constrained, you know? We, we have a lot of planning in ASO, so these things that kind of come from nowhere. And they did ask for a budget that we weren't ready or to cover. It wasn't in our Q1 or Q2 budget. So the response was pretty cool, but not affirmative. So we decided to approach this differently. And let's say, we'd say, okay, let's, let's go, okay? Let's use our, our guild's budget, even didn't cover. We, we have, we have an expression here in America that is coach surfing or surf coaching, that is sleeping in different sofas around friends or family houses. And we did that. And we did have the opportunity to go there and to participate in this and to represent and also to network with a bunch of people. So what do we highlight? Go, go back a little bit, people. Let's go from the first kind of link on that. So I'm going to cover a little bit of what we saw, okay? And then what would be the outcome of this? Okay, okay, so this is the event, the daily event of Web3 and AI, okay? We were there representing. Okay, so we started with a, with a onstage. Santi Ciri, it's a friend of the house. I, I know him for long. He's in Governance. He's a big ETH guy. And the main discussion on the opening session was all about ethics. So we were really on, on subject. We, we exchanged a little, some questions with the, with the people on, on stage. Always mentioning our, what we do or what community we represent. And as we are kind of leading, let's say, the avant-garde of ethics, or at least is what I feel, from SingularityNet and ASI Vision, the central item. You know, even a lot of people don't know us. We are in the right point on a bunch of stuff. So we did have the right questions for them in terms of autonomy, in terms of ethical development. And I was happy to have good answers from them, that they, you know, what they're talking. So and then there was, yeah, a lot of politics also involved in the, in the beginning of the discussion because it depends on what's the, let's say, idea or identity. Oh, that's a guy, that's Santi and he's a big renowned, I guess, journalist. You know, the, the ethics change within the political side, you know? And that's bias on what we are trying to develop. So we are stuck in the middle. And so all the questions we were talking at were more in the side of the AGIF example, how we, we perceive the, the rights of sentience and all these crazy shit we're discussing here a bunch. But how we feel it is important because it represents not only autonomy, but also ethical development. So it was really cool also to see a friend there. And well, Inez started taking notes on one of the, on the, on the books we have. A blog, it will be one of the outputs of this event, participating. As we always do, we write something down and we share big on it. Then, on the, on the second, and it's probably the, the third link I share with you. It's, what's cool to see is two concepts. Not, not this one, this is the last one, but this is right on point with us, okay? But we can, we can start with this one if you want to. And, and also again, we will share later on, probably on the channels, Theoretical, Theoric AI. A guy from Business Development from this project was onstage. Later, we shared a coffee. Agent verse. Agents and how they will change the crypto finance, finance power by, by AI agents. Of course, I'm on the opposite direction, so AI and dynamics. But finance will be, it needs to be part of that sustainable development. Finance is part of it. But if you put all the focus of this tool into that, then we are missing the whole point of what the power of this tool is. So there was a big discussion on it. But at the same time, as the crypto sphere is all about finance, there were some cool questions in terms of development. So Ash, the guy that you guys have seen on the picture, he was showing how they see this, this agent verse as fetch or hours, SNES or ASI. They will interact with themselves. They will, they will create not only interactions, they will have not only interactions, monetary, but also discussions between agents. So it was quite a mind-opening. And of course, when we say, okay, we could just can use this for finance, the guy was paying attention to us and I say, later we have this coffee. It was really cool because, yeah, it's also cool to know people that they're doing the same thing as you do. Because that's when you learn and you exchange kind of outputs and results. So yeah, it was a really cool, it was really cool to be part of that discussion. Then again, all the links I will share so you guys can check yourself what, what is this? The idea of the future of agentic finance power by swarms. So a lot of similar words from our spectrum, okay? Swarm, agentic, so really cool. I will share later on. But if you guys go to the SNES LATAM, yeah, X account, you guys are going to find all of these. Brackets, and thank you for all the support on the, on the platform to all of you guys that have shared or liked the content we put on. And then we met this other cool shaman. And again, it's pretty similar to our community. Very sensitive fellow with a lot of coding abilities, that is, Sweetman, that is using all his knowledge for art and creativity and music. So his approach, and, and that's on the, on the other post. Pete, let me see, I think it's the, the third one I shared. But again, if you go to the SNES LATAM, you're going to see, I think we put a thread on it.
It's just the third one.
Okay, go, go to the LATAM account, please.
Yeah, that's easier said than done without logging in.
Okay, no, let me, let me share it again. You have the right one.
It doesn't work.
No, don't worry. I'm going to throw it again on Telegram. But okay, so I was saying, a shaman, well, I think they were trying to say, introduce him as a sensitive guy, but you can say that he's an artist, okay? So a lot of similarities with us, you know? Ben is, is an artist too, a rock and roller, you can, you can quote him, definitely a musician. And this is Mike, I understand it, a lot of approach to development or the... And you go down on the thread and you're going to see Sweetman. So, oh yeah, without, without, no, let me, let me do it for you. Yeah, don't worry, don't worry. Sorry, we're just improving here. There you go, a new link on Telegram. So why I say this? I have the time to discuss or exchange too much with Ben. But we did participate in a lot of conversations about, in regards of the groups and... Yeah, and on BGI, I just have a chance to say thank you and hi. But definitely on the same spectrum, someone that approached development with creativity, kind of my same approach, so I was really kind of on the same page with, with this guy. And how the, the new quote, open quote, the new idea of bike coding. People that are creative, that, and as Mario always says, oh, developers, they, you know, they are technical. We need, we need to find the right place for them to interact with creative people and that way we'll have a... Yeah, so a lot of us have been pushing and working for that. So how a guy that is in the art era with the right tools can become this sole entrepreneur as one of the blogs that SingularityNet put out a month ago? How these powerful tools can lead us and help us to become a one-man operation? And how you deny it? Fight it or you just, you know, serve with the, with the flow? And how that, and you're going to like this one, but somebody, somebody remind the Napster dilemma with a drummer from Metallica jumping into the courthouse, something like that. 20 years ago, I think that was, you guys were young, but I did, I did went for that. You do remember that? So that was came, that was one of the comments on, on the, on the, on stage. And how, so there was two this, two of this, that I really like. I probably, I want to share before closing this. And then we will, we will go further probably in the monthly report and we will share some, a blog and that. I did like the discussion because myself, I do, I do understand the difficulty for a bunch of us who spent learning a lot of stuff that now a machine does in less than 10 seconds. But at the same time, it's not denied about that knowing what the computer is doing is better than that than knowing. So, and how, how these tools are helping us also in the learning process. They, they can do that. And, and how is that being used by artists, but not fighting against it? There was a point of all my fellow musicians, friends are really scared by this and it would be like, nobody had played a guitar after Jimi Hendrix, so that didn't happen. So the whole discussion was fun and at the same time, very dystopian. But it did have sense. So for the older dudes on the, on the, the place was cool to listen to these young kids and how they use these tools. And the other thing is that how the platform use this tool? How, how, let's say Spotify that I would put against the wall is using this to replace the artists? By doing their music through AI agents and not having to share the revenues with the artists? And the answer was simple, that so users will demand what they like and whatever is there that is good, people will listen. So it's pretty cool because at the same time, you have these young guys that are not fighting against it by using it, but at the same time, they are fighting against the platform. So, so it was, it was a nice discussion all around, surrounded by creativity. And how the, all the business models are being disrupted so fast in this, in this AI era? That when I asked, my last question was, okay, so you guys are talking about all of, all this technical disruption and you guys are ready for the real disruption that is AGI? Because coming back from that, probably is out there. So you guys put in all this effort in a business model, etc. But you have on your, on your roadmap, what are you going to do when this happens? The response was, no, good question, but no. So it's fun to see how we blindly follow, you know? And we keep building, ignoring or not knowing what is ahead of us. So it was kind of a revelation in that sense. We have a good time, the weather did help. And yeah, so it was a cool experience and also we did challenge ourselves to do something that we were willing to do even without, well, we did have resources. So it was our decision to put them in this. And hopefully, we have some on top of the blog and all the stuff we always put out. Also, we can follow up on networking with the people. And there are some other action items that we can, we can use from this experience in Buenos Aires. That's it, because if I go into the discussion of, there was a lot also of stuff we didn't like that much. Also onstage in regards of limiting the development and... so, um, not that I don't wanna show the 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 ugly part, uh I'm not interesting, let's say. Uh, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, very awesome. Um, any questions in the room? Or comments, or? You actually uh made me check, but that Metallica versus Napster is twenty-five years ago already. It's it's so crazy, the music industry is still not a solved puzzle in that sense, like it's completely crazy to me. Artists just still struggling against, you know, the system, um, it's bizarre. Uh, shout out to uh a couple of initiatives we have uh within the ecosystem, um there's Deep Noise Labs and Jam Galaxy and Incantio is specifically on on music rights, um trying to solve that puzzle, which is just absurd, uh for so long, it's still a a thing. I'm looking forward to the to the blog, always like uh Ines's writings, uh yeah, good stuff.
Cool, cool, yeah, um, I I if I just wanna talk with one word, uh it was nice to see the same concept of AI human collaboration all around the the space, um onstage, downstairs, under discussion, so, yeah. Uh, it was cool, it was cool to to take the discussion out from our ecosystem to the to the wider uh mainstream, um an open discussion with other chains and and developers around this. I I believe we're we're really in a good path, uh so yeah, and also, uh yeah, we did enjoy it, so yeah, it was good and looking forward to Ines's blog, thank you.
Oh, thank you, and Ines. And it's it's quite right what you say, um sometimes uh within Singularity Net's context, you know, the ecosystem is itself is already so big that it, personally, at least, sometimes, um trying to keep up with everything that's happening internally is already just too much, you know, there's only so much bandwidth than you have. And then at the same time, you know, there's a thousand other projects also doing their things and and I don't know, in the end, I I I feel we just need to push towards, especially on stuff like like AI collaborating with humans, uh at some point, there will need to be global standards, I imagine, um which are right now not in place. And somehow that needs to emerge from like all these people working just in AI, in Web three, um in the whole, yeah, wider wider space. I'm not quite sure, um like, I I think from Singularity Net's side, the, we do quite often feel like, well, we need to reset uh set the pace and and then, you know, we've got a vision and and that's where we go. But you really need, the 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 scale of the problems is just global, right? It's all humankind, um that has to deal with this uh upcoming AI, so you cannot just do it in a silo, you 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 need full worldwide, yeah. Getting together and and figuring it out. Um, um, yeah, so agenda-wise, uh that's pretty much it for today, um which if there's questions right now on on the uh Aleph Pop-Up City or in general, uh please feel free, if or if you feel like, well, let's discuss not budgets preferably, but anything else, um we definitely can, so yeah, feel free to to unmute and speak up. Even if it's just a small question, anything goes. Um, yeah, maybe it's time to give everybody um seventeen minutes of their time uh for today. Um, yeah, I mean, from from my side, I don't, yeah, happy to discuss anything.
Peter, why are you searching for crickets?
Is it just, well, I don't know, I was hearing cricket. No, is it?
It's a little bit creepy, I hate cricket, crickets, so it's kind of.
Just a joke, when it's, you hear crickets, right? So, might as well.
Oh, Vani, what did you do this time?
Tumbleweed, yeah, sure, that's the same. Yeah, all right, if if nobody raises their hands or speaks up, then uh I do think that's um wraps it up for today. So, yeah, thanks all for being here and uh sharing your time. And I'll throw a quick reminder on tomorrow's uh calls, we we start off with um the um AI Ethics Interview Session at thirteen UTC, and at fifteen UTC, there's Education uh Work Group. And at seventeen thirty UTC, there's R and D Guild. And then at twenty-two, UTC, there's um Latam Guild. So there's four calls tomorrow, um hope to see you on any of those, and if not, we'll talk on Discord. And please do take the time, if your um uh if your if your work group um has not been approved yet, to check out the um responses sheet and and yeah, interact through the comments there.
Thanks for hosting, Peter. Have a nice day.
You're welcome, and you too. Have a nice remainder of the Tuesday. Cheers.